Adrian Anne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for September 2nd, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brunwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Legions.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our presentation this evening recognizing Barry Lindahl's Savvy Over 60 Award recognition has been removed from this meeting and will be rescheduled for the next regular City Council meeting. So we'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Nathaniel and Charlotte Morgan Peace Week.
All right. I know we've got a few folks here to join us, but I believe, let's see, so Brian Halstus, Ernestine Moss, and James Bush are you coming up to accept this proclamation? Anyone who likes to can come on up. It's not limited.
My name is Ernestine Moss. I live at 2715 Ventura Drive in Dubuque, Iowa, and I'm a co-chair of Nathaniel Morgan's Memorial Committee.
And if you guys would like to say anything about the committee or the proclamation itself, or I know you've got an event coming up, feel free.
Yes, we do. This is a very important event that's taking place for us. We're doing this, building this memorial, so that we can help build a better community. Nathaniel Morgan and Charlotte was one of the first Black free people that lived in the territory of Dubuque, Iowa. And unfortunately, Nathaniel was assassinated in 1840 by a mob of people. And we want to build, at a particular time, I want to add too, there was quite a few Black people in Dubuque, free and slaves at that time. He happened to be a free Black man. But people's rights are important. Everyone is human. Everyone has rights and should be respected. And what we're doing is saying his rights weren't respected, his life was not respected. And we're saying in Dubuque, this must change. And it's working for change, and we're working for change. And what we're saying, all individuals have a right to have a home in which they feel safe, feel secure, and welcomed. And so what we're wanting to do, we're saying, Dubuque, come on in. We want to say welcome people to our community, and we want the city to stand behind us when we welcome one and all to our community. And so at that time, we're going to be celebrating this coming Saturday, September 6th, over at Voices at 6 o'clock. And we will be reading the proclamation, will be read at that particular time again. But I want to thank the mayor and the city for letting this take place tonight.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Moss, and everyone, for your work on this. I know you're back again this year to celebrate this again and talk about this and make sure you bring awareness about the issues that happened to Nathaniel and Charlotte Morgan, but then also for the reasons that you pointed out, to help us create the most welcoming community that we can possibly have. So thank you very much for taking all the time that you take to do this and for being here tonight to accept this proclamation.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the City of Dubuque has committed to uncovering the history of all Dubuquers through the Black Heritage Survey in an effort to tell a more complete story of Dubuque. And whereas Nathaniel and Charlotte Morgan were among the pioneers of Dubuque and contributed to its growth by working hard, purchasing the first platted lot, Lot 1, owning a home, supporting Dubuque's first Protestant church, and persevering in the face of racism as African-Americans in a community that practiced slavery. And whereas the lynching of Nathaniel Morgan and the subsequent pardoning of the lynchers shattered the potential for interracial unity and peace by fueling white supremacy. And whereas members of the National Nathaniel Morgan Memorial Committee, the NMCC, believe that confronting our past injustice leads to learning, teaching, and building an equitable and diverse community. And whereas Dubuquers increasingly make a concerted effort in the face of ignorance, indifference, and racism to build an equitable and diverse community that honors the faith, aspirations, and perseverance of our earliest Black residents. And whereas the NMCC and other Dubuque residents maintain that in life Nathaniel and Charlotte Morgan represented the promise of a unified and peaceful interracial community. And whereas the NMCC will celebrate this rekindled promise of unity and peace in a public memorial service on September 6th at 6:00 PM at the Voices Studio. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the first week of September as Nathaniel and Charlotte Morgan Peace Week. Come on up.
Give her a hand. Our second proclamation is Days of Peace and Nonviolence.
Okay, and I see R.R.S. Stewart here.
Hi. So I'm R.R.S. Stewart, 460 Summit Street. Basically tailed the mayor down the hill because we live around the corner from each other. And I am the Chair of the Dubuque International Day of Peace Coordinating Committee. And every week, or not every week, every year, we put together a festival of a few weeks around the International Day of Peace, which is September 21st. So you already heard about the first event in the festival, which is the annual memorial to Charlotte and Nathaniel Morgan. And then there's three weeks of events running to September 27th. The keynote speaker is up at Loris. You'll hear about that in the proclamation, but I just gave all of you a copy of the brochure, which is all the events. So we hope that you'll be able to make some of them over the next three weeks, which are, again, in the proclamation you'll hear, are Days of Peace in Dubuque.
Well, thank you, R.R.S., for being here again this year to accept this proclamation. This has been ongoing for quite a few years.
Yes, since 2010.
Wow. Yeah, that's great. And I know that it's always a great weekend, and in fact, has become an even bigger week with added events and other things that are going on during it. So thank you very much to you and everyone who coordinates this every year.
Yeah, we reach out to all different sorts of groups around Dubuque and just say, if you want to plan a week or other events in September and make it part of our Days of Peace, well, we'd love to have you. So that's how it's grown into about three weeks now.
Yeah, that's great. Well, thank you for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations and people to honor a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the Day of Peace. And whereas there is growing support within our nation for the observance of the International Day of Peace, including a group of Dubuque area residents inviting all to create a culture of peace by participating in a citywide celebration from Friday, September 6th to Saturday, September 27th. And whereas local and global violence impels all residents to work toward converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into a practical reality, it is possible to see our community and world turn from violent to nonviolent solutions within our lifetimes. And whereas the Dubuque Day of Peace Organizing Committee's 2025 focus will be Persistence: A Pathway to Peace, with a keynote by Marie Dennis on Monday, September 22nd, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM in the Alumni Campus Center at Loris College. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby recognize the United Nations International Day of Peace and proclaim September 6th to 28th as Days of Peace and Nonviolence in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon the residents of Dubuque to further affirm a vision of our world at peace by fostering cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations.
Our final proclamation is Crop Hunger Walk Day in Dubuque.
All right. And Sarah McCaw is here with us today.
And that's the last today.
And it is McCaw, right? I got that correct. Yes, thank you.
I'm Sarah McCaw, and I live at 2057 Carter Road. I am the chairperson of the Dubuque Crop Hunger Walk Committee, which is sponsored by Dubuque Area Congregations United. Crop Hunger Walks are part of the Church World Service programming. Church World Service is an ecumenical organization nationally and internationally that helps people who are food insecure, but also does a lot of work with refugees all over the world as well. And because of the closing of USAID, the crop walks are especially important this year. So we are excited because we have a new crop walk. We're going to start at the farmer's market. We have the community booth at the farmer's market. And we have guided walks that will take you around the downtown area, showing you places that help in partnership to help people who are food insecure and hungry in the City of Dubuque. So this guided tour will include the Dubuque Rescue Mission and the Rescue Mission Gardens. It will include the food pantry. People in Need will also be our partners at the booth at the farmer's market. We'll go by St. Vincent de Paul, we'll go by the Salvation Army, and we'll go by many congregations in the City of Dubuque that provide meals and food, edible landscape, and all kinds of things to help people get the food that they need to live, thrive, and survive. So thank you so much. We appreciate your support for this program. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council Members.
Well, Sarah, thank you so much for organizing this. I mean, it sounds like an amazing event, so we appreciate the fact that you're doing this and everyone who's involved in being a part of this. I think it's a great addition to the rest of the events that we're talking about here and a new way to see Dubuque and to think in a really important way. So thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas since 1946, Crop Church/Church World Service has had walks to collect funds to alleviate hunger overseas and in the United States. And whereas Crop Hunger Walk pledges to meet human need in over 70 countries with disaster and emergency response, refugee and immigrant services, and economic and social upheaval response. And whereas Dubuque Rescue Mission, Dubuque Food Pantry, and People in Need each will equally share the 25% retained locally of the total amount collected. And whereas Dubuque Annual Crop Hunger Walk will take place Saturday, September 27th, 2025, starting at City Hall, proceeding in the downtown area, then returning to the point of origin to help our community become aware of and concerned about how hunger affects us all. And whereas the Crop Hunger Walk will raise funds to help stop hunger both locally and globally. And whereas the 2025 Crop Hunger Walk will honor the late Morgan Fraser, Director of the Dubuque Rescue Mission. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 27th of September 2025 as Crop Hunger Walk Day in Dubuque, and urge residents of Dubuque to participate with the Dubuque Area Congregations United to support this walk.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 4 of the agenda.
All right. Do we have anyone here from the public who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion? Seeing no one here, nothing virtually?
No.
Okay. Back to us for any removals. I do think I'd like to hold number 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
Receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 13.
Second by Farber.
I'm going to motion my Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. All right, so on to number 13. I'll entertain a motion, please. Get it on the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Allen, deal with as recommended.
Second by Sprank.
I will, we got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Thank you. And I just wanted to call this to people's attention. We have a great new, a great new handout, and we've gotten, we have paper copies here, and there are quite a few paper copies of workforce housing and what that means for Dubuque. I think, I just, I didn't want to belabor this too much, I just wanted to be able to say to our staff in particular, thank you very much for making this possible and showing the community what workforce housing is really doing and what it means here in Dubuque. There's a specific example of the workforce housing that's happening at the Union at Marina Project, but really, this is about quite a few different things that are going on in the City of Dubuque right now. You know, the last few years, housing has been a major focus of this City Council and of the community. I mean, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, we had lots of different groups that were community members that were very focused on housing. And the fact that we have had an opportunity to have such success, honestly, with the housing that we have here, I think speaks volumes of this community and the things that we're able to accomplish. So I've enjoyed the last few weeks talking to people about this handout now that it's here, actually, last week, I guess we've had it, but just talking about it and helping people to recognize what workforce housing really is in the City of Dubuque and what it really means for us, and how it's for those who are living here now, as well as people who would like to move to Dubuque. I had a great conversation with a person today, in fact, who was not from Dubuque originally. They're from Georgia and moved to Dubuque a few years ago. In fact, we had a conversation then. And then moved away and back to Georgia and realized that Dubuque was actually pretty awesome, and came back to Dubuque and found a great spot in the North End, actually, Mr. Sprank, to have a great life. And I really appreciate stories like that, and I hear them more and more, and that's the kind of story that we want to continue to create and help to write here in the City of Dubuque. So I'm excited to be able to have this and be able to talk about it more. I just want to make sure I've called it out for people's attention. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing this up. I do want to also thank all our partners in this. We've got a, we've got a very active development community that we are working with, and also the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and many others. But, you know, this is a priority for us and for our staff, and so many more. And as you say, it's really coming together, and it's exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I actually appreciate you pointing that out, Mr. Resnick. You know, the City of Dubuque doesn't actually build housing. We, as a government, we don't build housing. We work with private developers to do so, and the incentives that we've provided here as a City Council and as a city, I think, have really spurred that development. But it wouldn't happen if the private developers in our community didn't answer that call. So I really appreciate their partnership, absolutely. All right. Motion here is to receive and file. There's no further discussion. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
The motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing, and we have four. First is resolution setting public hearing on a proposed development agreement with ASJS Properties LLC for redevelopment of 1913 Jackson Street for September 15th, 2025. Second is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Adam Vogel Building LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement for redevelopment of 1701 Central Avenue for September 15th, 2025. Third is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Dubuque Initiatives 1700 LLC for the redevelopment of 1739 to 1763 Central Avenue for September 15th, 2025. And fourth is Water System Improvements 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project State Revolving Fund, SRF Loan, resolution setting the public hearing environmental review for October 6th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousseau, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have application review for the Airport Commission.
Okay, so for the Airport Commission, we have one four-year term through September 14th, 2029, and we have one applicant, Mary Ann Kurtz Weber. Do we have anyone present or virtually to speak to this application?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, it's Mary Ann.
Hang on one second, Mary Ann. We're going to try to turn you down just a notch. You're really loud. Go ahead again, Mary Ann.
How is this?
It's about the same, but why don't you go ahead? So thanks for being here.
I apologize. I am not attempting to shout.
No, it's not you. It's not you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I'm sorry I'm not able to be with you in person, but I'm traveling this week, so I appreciate the virtual connection. As the mayor said, I am applying for a third term on the Airport Commission. I am a frequent traveler, both domestic and internationally, and prior to COVID, I was considered one of the road warriors commuting out of Dubuque weekly or every other week from Dubuque to Washington, DC. So I have a lot of, lot of experience with the airlines. I would just like to say that successful commercial air service is essential to our community in Dubuque and to our metropolitan statistical area. We know we have a lot of work to do, and we are committed to doing all that we can that is in our power to try to keep and maintain quality commercial air service from the Dubuque Regional Airport. I serve as the commission's representative to the 501(c)(6) Dubuque Air Board, so it's a combination of the city, the county, the chamber, Travel Dubuque, and the airport, really focusing on strategies to develop and keep commercial air service in our city. And it would be my privilege to be able to serve another term on the Airport Commission. And I invite all of you this Sunday, from 8 to 12, to join the Experimental Aircraft Association and the airport at a fly-in, drive-in, pancake breakfast. Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you very, very much, Mary Ann, for your comments. Any other, anyone else to speak to this application? Seeing no one else? Okay, we can move on to public hearings then.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Greater Dubuque Impact Investment Fund for redevelopment of 1550 Elm Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousseau, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
You're coming to me for this one.
Oh, sorry, Krena. Go ahead, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Greater Dubuque Impact Investment Fund for the redevelopment of 1550 Elm Street in Dubuque. The proposed development agreement includes the following. One, developer will purchase approximately .59 acres at 1550 Elm Street for $174,800 to be offset by a land acquisition grant of the same amount contingent upon the construction of the improvements required by the agreement. Developer will construct community health and related office facilities to be operated by a nonprofit healthcare provider for a total estimated cost of $5 million. Three, developer will begin construction on or before October 1, 2027, and shall be substantially complete by April 1, 2029. This timeline allows for an anticipated 18- to 24-month environmental assessment or mitigation process ahead of construction. And four, if the property is subject to real estate property taxes, the city will provide 10 years of tax increment financing rebates. If the property qualifies for exemption as nonprofit use, the owner is allowed to apply for that exemption. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Krena. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Greater Dubuque Impact Investment Fund for the redevelopment of 1550 Elm Street in Dubuque. Do we have anyone from the public to address us on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the Council, City Manager Mike Van Milligan, most excellent city team. I rise today not as a representative of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, but as a member of the committee that is recommending this for your consideration tonight, and I ask for your favorable consideration. The Impact Fund is, board is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I have the privilege of serving as a representative of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation on that committee. It also has representation from the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque and of the Dubuque Initiatives nonprofit. The mission is to work with funds that are at the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque that have been supplied by the DRA, and to use portions of those dollars for projects that are solid projects, but they need to have a capital stack to make them, that work. So this is the first project that's going to be considered. I think this is an, this is an exciting addition to nonprofits investing in our community, and this is a close collaboration with the City of Dubuque, and I thank you for your consideration. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments. Anyone else? Anything virtually?
Yeah.
Okay. Back to us then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
Krena, I have a question. Item number four, if the property is subject to real property taxes, we will provide 10 years of tax, and then if it doesn't qualify for the exemption as a nonprofit, et cetera. Could you just verify what that really means in terms of layman's terms?
What that means is there could be periods where there are taxes or are not taxes levied depending on a determination made by the county related to its assessment status. So for example, if certain entities, if the use falls within certain exemptions, they would be exempt from property taxes. The traditional example that I can think of would be like a church, for example, would be exempt, but if a church rented out its parking lot during the week for area workers and they were receiving income on it, that particular use would be taxed. So there's a process by which the county evaluates how a property is used to determine whether a property is exempt or not, and in some cases, it can be partial exemption and some taxes are owed. So we just, we don't control that, so it was built in the, into the agreement to accommodate that.
Okay, and that, thus the tenure, too, as an example?
Is an option, yes.
It's an option, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Or does, Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. So, Mr. Dickinson, as you mentioned, there's a required capital stack, and I'm just wondering, does that stack of capital include any or require federal funds?[1773.21] does that stack of capital include any or require federal funds? And have other funding partners been identified?
The projects includes, first of all, the collaboration between the 501(c)(3) and the City of Dubuque and transferring that property for higher and better use. There's a structure at 1500 block that is, has good bones, and we intend to have adaptive reuse of that facility. The city in this project is transferring half of that block, it's the west side of that block, to the initiatives group, and we are looking at federal funds, some, there are some environmental issues to the property that will be applying for state and federal dollars to assist in the cleanup, and we'll reach out to others to try to finance this project. And the intent is that there would be a tenant prior to beginning this project, an adaptive reuse of the building. This is referred to as the Blum Property between 15th and 16th Street, which is property of lore, but now this is an attempt to really clean up that site, have it be a nice addition of the community, and take the building with good bones through adaptive reuse, convert it to better use.
I see, so thank you. So first, you're gonna do the cleanup, and then you're gonna have some funding requests with a clean bill of health there?
Actually, the city's done a very good job of nearly completing the cleanup of the site for the western side of the block already, but there are some additional funds that will be used for asbestos removal, assessments phase one, phase two, and the usual assortment of requirements to make sure that it's a solid project environmentally.
Great, thank you very much, because I agree with my council colleagues, I think that they feel that this is an important project for our residents, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is resolution of adoption for the amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan Version 2025.3.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Second by Jones, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
All right.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending adoption of a resolution of adoption for the amended and restated Urban Renewal Plan Version 2025.3 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. The original Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District was created on May 2nd, 1988. The district is an urban renewal area which allows the City of Dubuque to capture tax increment revenue from improvements made in the district in order to promote economic development activities. The original area included the Dubuque Industrial Center, known as SubArea A, and has been expanded several times over the years. This proposed amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District would result in the removal of property from SubArea B. Due to legislation in 1995, the collection of tax increment in urban renewal areas designated for economic development purposes is limited to 20 years. SubArea B of the district in which this parcel is located had its tax increment financing sunset in 2018. If the parcel were to remain in SubArea B, city would be unable to provide full future economic development incentives. The property will still remain within the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Area. Removal of certain property from the expired SubArea B is necessary to accommodate the issuance of urban renewal tax rebates under a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and SJR Properties LLC and Universal Tank and Fabrication. The property will be designated as a new SubArea in a subsequent amendment of the Urban Renewal Plan. City of Dubuque has had tremendous success with this economic development approach, receiving multiple national recognitions for job creation. This is in no small part due to the city's decision in the mid-1990s to acquire and develop over 900 acres of property to provide a 20-year supply of industrial park land, which with subsequent property acquisitions, has expanded to almost 1,500 acres. This proposed modification of the district would further the city's goal for economic development. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve a resolution of adoption for the amended and restated Urban Renewal Plan Version 2025.3 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. Do we have any members of the public to address us on this item? Seeing none, anyone virtually?
No.
Okay, back to us then for any discussion. Ms. Resnick.
Very quickly, I'm glad that Mr. Van Milligan included that we've been very successful, because sometimes, you know, this important city economic plan that we do and we help, we have these, this way that we can at least assist with development, sometimes it's taken for granted, sometimes, well, we're just gonna, we're gonna get this, and we have to work very hard to make sure that these kind of awards and help for developers are there for them. And we have done a lot of work, again, with our partners, the developers, and had a lot of success. I'm just, I'm glad that Mr. Van Milligan talked about it, it's just not, here's another one and away we go, but let's appreciate all the great work that we've done and the developers have included to make our city better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Resnick. All right, seeing no further questions or discussion. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is resolution of adoption for the amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan Version 2025.4.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adoption of a resolution of adoption for the amended and restated Urban Renewal Plan Version 2025.4 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. The original Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District was created on May 2nd, 1988. The district is an urban renewal area which allows the City of Dubuque to capture tax increment revenue from improvements made in the district in order to promote economic development activities. The original area included the Dubuque Industrial Center, known as SubArea A, and has been expanded several times over the years. This proposed expansion and amendment of Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District would result in the addition of property to be designated as a new SubArea X that was previously removed from SubArea B. The expansion of the district is necessary to accommodate the issuance of urban renewal tax rebates under a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, SJR Properties, and Universal Tank and Fabrication. The City of Dubuque has had tremendous success with this economic development approach, receiving multiple national recognitions for job creation. This is in no small part due to the city's decision in the mid-1990s to acquire and develop over 900 acres of property to provide a 20-year supply of industrial park land, which with subsequent property acquisitions has expanded to almost 1,500 acres. This proposed modification of the district would further the city's goal for economic development. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve a resolution of adoption for the amended and restated Urban Renewal Plan Version 2025.4 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
No.
All right, thank you. Back to us then, any discussion? Ms. Resnick.
Briefly, I would like to double down on what I had said earlier, and Dubuque, we are open for business, and with development partners such as Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and many other private developers, they have been getting things done, and we're ready for the next wave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is public hearing vacating a portion of a utility easement over part of Lot 2, Block 4 of Indian Hills in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, Emily and Scott McGuire property at 1195 Arrowhead Drive.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council adopt the resolution vacating all interest in the public utility easement located over a portion of Lot 2, Block 4 of Indian Hills in the City of Dubuque as requested by Emily and Scott McGuire to accommodate a proposed residential building addition. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution vacating all interest in the public utility easement located over a portion of Lot 2, Block 4 of Indian Hills in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, as requested by Emily and Scott McGuire to accommodate a proposed residential building addition. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one, anything virtually?
No.
Nothing there, all right, back to us then for any discussion? Questions? Ms. Resnick?
Mr. Van Milligan, so when we get these requests, and we do vacate the public utility easement, so we had that in case we needed to put some public utilities in there, and we've determined that we don't need that space right now, or how is that determined that this is a, this is a good place that we don't, the public doesn't need this easement?
Sure, I'm gonna see if City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is on the line, oh, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schisel is on the line, and so he'll be able to address that question for you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Schisel, Assistant City Engineer, can you hear me okay?
Yep, sure can.
Okay, so on the request, when these type of requests come in, we do evaluate the need for the public utility easements, and in this particular situation, where the property owner is requesting to vacate, to do a home expansion, we evaluated and we determined that there was an existing permanent utility easement that would be impacted, and in working with the property owner, we agreed to vacate the existing easement, and the property owner created a new replacement, permanent utility easement along the back of the property. So it was basically a one-for-one swap, so to speak. In doing so, we also collaborate with all of the other private utility providers, and they are also required then to agree to the vacate of the easement and the creation of the new replacement, public utility easement, in this particular case, along the back of the property.
Thank you very much. Now, these are relatively common, they come before us all the time, but I think it's important for us to hear it, residents to hear, quite the process that goes into these relatively common things for us, but obviously, the whole community involved, the whole neighborhood is involved with that, and the public good is, we are looking out for the public still, and I would appreciate the cooperation of the homeowners. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is Rustic Point Park Development Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I have a motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Interim Parks and Recreation Director Steve Faisal is recommending city council approve the construction plans and specifications, estimated cost of $258,278.50 for the Rustic Point Park Development Project and adopt the attached resolution. Lot K in the Rustic Point subdivision was donated by the developer to be developed into a park. The lot is now owned by the City of Dubuque. Development agreement between the city and Derby Grange LLC outlined that when 50% of the residential homes within the development are completed, the park will be constructed. In December 2024, a contract amendment was approved with WHKS and Company for public engagement, topographic survey, and conceptual design services for Rustic Point Park. WHKS and Company, along with subcontractors Lovely City Consulting and Rittland Kuiper, were engaged, and the first step of the design process was community input. Similar planning process was used for the three mini parks, Eagle Valley, English Ridge, and Westbrook Parks, with the same consultant team. This included online surveys, mailed postcards, inviting people to participate in the survey, and an in-person event at the park site. Opportunities for community-wide engagement were offered and promoted through media releases and social media postings. A summary of the engagement is attached to this item. The name of the park was approved by city council on April 21st, 2025. The concept park plan for Rustic Point Park was approved by city council on June 2nd, 2025. WHKS has prepared 100% plans and specifications for the park development. The plans and specifications have been reviewed and approved by the city's development review team. This subdivision is in a tax increment financing district, and according to Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson, the city must budget from general funds to reimburse from the Rustic TIF in order to certify the debt for the park. Funding approved by the city council was general obligation debt. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider the city council approve the construction plans and specifications and the estimated cost for the Rustic Point Park Development Project. Do we have any members of the public to address us on this item tonight? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you both. All right, back to us then. Actually, I'm gonna open with a question, Mike, if you don't mind, and this is more from my understanding, but I think it would also help the public understand. Can you explain a little bit more the funding source for this, and, because it's, the budget from general funds to reimburse from the Rustic TIF in order to certify the debt for the park? Can you just explain that a little bit more, so it's a little clearer?
So, the funding is from tax increment financing from the development itself, so it comes from the increased value that the developer created by developing the industrial park, I'm sorry, the housing subdivision, and then subsequent properties that have been built on it, so that's the funding source. But what the state requires is you just can't take the money directly out of that funding source. First, we have to spend the money out of the general fund, and then reimburse it from that funding source, and the way we're handling it is through a debt issuance, so, well, that issuance might not be quite accurate, is, it's certified as debt, so, and then the tax increment financing district will reimburse the city for any of the costs.
And I see that there are two line items from, for the current budget that are available, and it's the Rustic Point Park Development, which was a project number line item that we had in the budget, and then also the tree program. There are two different things that we're using to be able to have the funds to be able to pay for that.
Right.
That will then be paid back through the TIF funds later.
Yeah, and I missed that important point. The council approved this all through the budget process?
Yeah, okay, thank you for that clarity, appreciate that. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank first, and then Ms. Farber.
Not really a question, just more of a comment on the process. I'm very appreciative that we're actually trying to get in so much community input, because a lot of folks, they get, when we're designing a park, all of a sudden there's a park slapped in their neighborhood, and they had no public input, so I'm very appreciative that we're continuing to use this model that we've been very successful with, three other small parks, and of course with Comiskey Park, so I hope we continue to use this model where we, when we develop more parks in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Farber.
Just to add on to your question, and Mike, the payback or the reimbursement of the timeframe that comes back to the city?
Yeah, actually, I don't know that off the top of my head, and I don't think Jennifer Larson, the Chief Financial Officer, is on the call. I don't know, do you know, Steve? No, I don't know the timeframe. I think it's fairly short, because housing TIFs are only allowed to exist for 10 years, and this development's been there quite a long time, so my guess is it's a fairly quick turnaround.
So it'll be a 10-year bond?
No, I don't think so. I don't think, no, because, you know, I can try and look in here to see if it shows when the, when the development was built, and so, so that's when it would have started. It was pre-pandemic, so it's at least five years that it's been there, so, yeah, I don't know, I don't think it's that.
Okay, so it's kind of like a rolling ladder with the bond issue, so it'll, when it's come due, then we will have the funds to replace.
Yeah, and it actually might, it might be almost immediate. It might be we're spending the general fund and just getting, right, reimbursed back, but...
Okay, that's an accounting issue, as we say. All right, thank you, Mike.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? Seeing nobody jumping up here yet, anybody virtually, nothing virtually either, okay? All right, then we can move on to action items.
Action item number one is smart parking and mobility management plan update.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Excuse me, Director of Transportation Services Ryan Nuckey will be providing an update on the progress of the smart parking and mobility management plan that the city council previously approved.
Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager Van Milligan. Like the city manager said, I'm just here to give you an update tonight, taking any questions you have about the technology we're putting in, and let you know what we're going to be doing moving forward. There it works. So the agenda, we're going to talk about the new ramp signage, entrances and exits, new parking management software, the next steps, and then I'm here for any questions you guys have as we go along the way. New ramp signage. Our ramps have not been touched in quite a few years, and I'm very excited to say we're going to give them a paint job. So we've already started in certain ramps. Our goal is to make our ramps vibrant, exciting, welcoming as people come into the ramps. Currently, as we drive into a lot of ramps, it's a lot of concrete, a lot of old faded colors, and with that, people forget where they park. So, we're going to be adding some color to the ramps. We've already started this with our Locust Street ramp, so we did an overhaul of the stair towers in the Locust Street ramp. This is an example of what the bottom floor looks like. We have the big, it says Locust Street ramp right on top of the sign, lets them know they're on the ground level with the blue coloring. On the second level, we went with more of a lime green. Again, we want these colors to stand out, and the big reason we want them to stand out is when people call us and say, "I parked in the city of Dubuque, I don't know where I'm at." I want them to be able to tell us, "Well, what color did you see when you went in the stair tower?" This will help us help them find where they need to be at. So we went with a lime green on the second floor. Again, these are vibrant colors, and so we moved to the third floor of Locust, it's more of a hunter orange as we move forward. These are more vibrant colors, but what we did was we concealed them more within the ramps, so they're not on the outside of the ramps to draw attention, they're more on the inside as people advance to the stair towers. So, we're giving the ramps a paint job if they need it for sure, but this new signage will be going in all of the ramps to make it universal across the board. Now we're talking of the new equipment, the new technology going in. All of the ramps, and we have this installed, four of them, not turned on totally yet, but we're getting there, all of the ramps will have these signs out fronting, letting people know the availability in the ramp. So this is at the intermodal ramp now, when you're on Ninth Street. You'll be able to, as you go down Ninth Street, look over at the ramp, find the spaces available at the ramp, to know if there's available space for you to pull in and park or not. If this is at a zero, it will clearly tell you that the ramp's full and that you're not supposed to enter. Even if you enter, we still have a method to get you in and out of the ramp. The other thing we're going to be doing is, this is also at the intermodal ramp, we're going to be porting more information on our signs. So this is a brand-new updated sign at the intermodal ramp on the Washington side stair tower. You'll notice that the sign up in the right or left-hand corner, it does say intermodal ramp, it has the ground level on it, it's the same blue color as before, but at the bottom with our new technology in the ramps, it's telling the people utilizing the ramp different ways to pay at that ramp. We want these signs to be informative, so people know what to do, how to operate our ramps, so that we don't have congestion on the exit side. When we're talking entrances and exits, we always have congestion on the exit. So this is a snapshot of the Washington Street entrance at the intermodal ramp. You'll notice clear signage, which side's enter, which side's exit. It also has in the center of the screen the spaces available in that ramp, which, that goes up and down, it's live time those signs are, so as a car pulls in, it goes up, as a car pulls out, it goes down. It's live time within seconds of those arms going up and down. But the big thing I want to stress is the exit side. This is where we get congestion in our ramps. If we have big functions downtown, especially in the Millwork District, if we have people, if we have weddings down there, we get congestion on the outbound. So what we've done with our new technology is we've made it so that to exit these ramps, if you're not a permit holder, it's a credit card only payment. It speeds everything up. It is half the time as if we were to do cash. I do have an option for cash as we get further into this, but this makes it go faster so we don't have that congestion. The other thing we've done in this setup is as people come up, you'll see that on the left-hand side, we have the new technology to exit the ramp. People will pull up, if they do have a ticket, as in they're a public parker, they literally scan it, pay with credit card, and out they go. Pretty simple, pretty fast, very efficient way to get them out. If you're a permit holder, it's even faster. If you do not have your license plate on file, you'd pull up, you scan your Prox card down in the left-hand corner there, the bullseye, ramp arm's going to go up. The majority of all our people in the intermodal ramp, I'm going to say the majority, have put their license plates on file. So when I say on file, they're within this AMANO system and technology, so the picture up in the upper right-hand corner shows a camera, and these cameras are positioned in these ramps, so as you pull to exit out of this ramp, it's automatically opening that gate, as long as it's reading your license plate. It's not 100% always going to read a license plate, you're going to have snow on it, mud on it, dirt, there's going to be some times where the sunlight might throw it off a little bit, but what we've seen, the majority of the time, as you're pulling up, and I'm not saying you can go 25 miles an hour through these, it's a very fast function. People are pulling up before they even hit their brakes to stop to get their Prox card out, the gate's going up, and they're proceeding out. Our congestion has limited itself with this technology that we put in. Now, with looking at the Ninth Street side, again, we have the sign that shows availability on the ramp, clear enter, clear exit signs, but as you pull into the entry lane, you'll notice that there's nowhere to go. You're stuck in this alleyway, which is fantastic for us, because it makes people go through the process. As you pull up to the entry technology, again, if you're a permit holder, if you're going at a slow pace, that camera up on the column up there, that's going to read your license plate, and again, you will proceed through this ramp. We positioned these cameras so that they were more on the inside of the ramps to read your license plate, so you just keep on flowing through the ramp. We have people that have called in and said, "How does it know I'm here?" And we just tell them, "Look up at the cameras," and they're like, "Is it taking my picture?" I'm like, "No, we don't want to know who's driving, we just want to know what license plate's coming in our ramp." If you are not a permit holder, you pull right up to the entry technology, push the button, you receive a ticket, and you proceed into the ramp. As we exit, it's the same setup. Big sign right in the middle says credit card only. We want people to be using the credit card on the way out if they don't have the permit. It keeps everything flowing that much nicer, and along with that, we have the LPR system. Again, as people are going out, it's a seamless system. It's a seamless routine for people just to exit these ramps now, and we don't have the buildup when we have large events. I mentioned earlier that we do have an option to pay with cash, so we have what's called a pay-on-foot station. This pay-on-foot station is in the stair tower on the Washington Street side. You'll notice up in the right-hand corner, we have signage saying pay station located in elevator lobby. The signs in the ramp reference this pay station, so as people are using the east side stair tower, I'm sorry, as they're using that, it references where this pay station is, so they can navigate through the ramp to find it. The big thing here is, as people go up and pay for their ticket, literally you walk up, you scan your ticket, you pay with your cash or your credit card, it takes credit card also, that way you don't have to stop in the lane, this system, as long as it read your license plate, will open that gate before you even get to scan your ticket on the exit lane. As you pull in, the system's recording your license plate on your ticket, which I wasn't quite sure how that would happen, but it works. So, it comes in, it reads your license plate, it gives you a ticket. If you pay here, 100%, you either pull up to the ramp and it'll let you out right away, or you'll pull up to the ramp, scan your ticket, it already knows you prepaid, and away you go out the door. The third way to pay is on each ticket, and next time I come to council, I'll definitely have a picture so I can reference it, but each ticket has a QR code, so people that don't want to use a credit card or cash, they can easily scan this QR code and pay directly right off their phone. Again, it's going to know when you go to exit that, hey, this person's paid, this is their license plate, that LPR system will be letting that arm up as you go out the door. After you pay at these systems, it doesn't start a stopwatch that says, hey, you have two minutes to get out of the ramp. There's a 15-minute grace period, so you don't have to go run to your car, you can take your time, get to your vehicle, and you have plenty of time to exit out of the Here's the fun part. This is the data side that we were looking for. Every time we've come to council so far, I've said we need to start collecting data in these ramps. The AMANO1 dashboard has more buttons than I think we've even used at the current time, but we're getting our way through it. We're probably about 75% through it. One of the nice dashboards in there is the alerts dashboard. So this system physically tells us before it's almost broken. So as it knows that it, paper jam, it's alerting us, as it knows it's running out of tickets, it's letting us know this information before it happens. The nice part about this is it goes directly to our text phones, they can go fix the issue, so that way it doesn't become an issue future state. Very neat technology, very nice to have as we move forward. Activity in the ramps. As people pull in and out of the ramp, it's reading their information, and it's telling us, hey, this person's in the ramp, this person exited the ramp. The biggest thing on this side is we're able to see if we have anybody that's doing a staycation in our ramps, as in they've been there quite a few days, and we might want to do a wellness check on them, or we need to figure out why they're in this ramp for this long. So this system allows us to go through, we can filter out what we're looking for, to make sure that if we do need to do a wellness check, that's available. Here's the occupancy level. This is one thing that we've manually done, as in we've been going in the ramps, we've manually counted how many cars are in the ramps. This system does it for us, and it doesn't just do the entire ramp, it lets me know how many permit holders or contract individuals are in the ramp, it lets us know how many transits or public parkers are in the ramp, and then it gives us a total. So that total, during the normal day, we've been ranging between 130 to 160 available spaces in the intermodal ramp. So what that's telling me, during our busiest times, I still have extra room in this ramp that I can go off the waiting list and start adding people to this ramp. This allows us to put more vehicles in these ramps and utilize them for what they're for. We want to get these ramps up to 75 to 85% full on a constant basis. The other thing on the dashboard is the revenue side, and this plays a big role in just yearly budgeting. So I can go to the city manager and say, hey, this intermodal ramp, this is the average revenue it's bringing in a week, this is my average yearly revenue, which will give me a lot better projections as I go to budget season. What are our next steps? We have two ramps complete. We have the intermodal ramp and central ramp are both turned on at the current time. I do want to thank the people that park in those ramps, because they were wonderful to work with, they came to get their cards, they asked questions, that's the biggest part, asking questions. They weren't scared to say, "What's this thing for, and what's that button do, and why do I need this?" That helps us inform them, and I have a great staff that works on this, Russ Stackline, Denny Arnsdorf, they've been at the ramps two days prior to opening them, just to make sure people were getting their cards, letting them know we're going live, and then also explaining, this is what the LPR system is, this is how fast the gate will go up. That has helped us seamlessly kind of work through these. Every ramp we've gone to, we always need to take about four to five hours just to reconfigure the cameras a little bit, and the reason is, sometimes we got to worry about the sunlight. Sometimes it's shooting a shorter vehicle compared to a lifted-up Ford truck. There's variances in there that we've had to accommodate, and these two ramps, everybody in them has been wonderful. The next ramp we're going to be turning on this Thursday would be the Fifth Street ramp. The Locust ramp will be at the end of September, and then we have Five Flags in Iowa Street set for October. Some cities do a big bang setup, as in get everything and turn it all on at once, that's not the approach we took. We took one at a time, and the reason we had to do that is, we have over, right at 2,100 people that park in our ramps with permits. I have a staff of four that manage this. I don't have the manpower to be at every ramp to answer a question, so we took this approach where we would turn one on at a time, figure out what's working well, what's not working well, and how to communicate it better. As of now, I wouldn't change a thing on it. I also have on here, in September, we're starting to work on the on-street RFP, we have that probably about 85% complete. That should be coming back to council, I'm hoping, first part of October. As far as the closing, I do want to talk about that on-street RFP that we have coming. The first portion was the ramps. We needed the ramps up and running, we had obsolete equipment, we had ramps that we didn't know occupancy levels. I'm going by November 1st, we should have all that figured out. It should be figured out, everything should be up and running. That allows me to transition my team into the on-street. And this RFP, we have revamped probably five to seven times already with the technology and the information we're learning from the ramp technology. So, with the on-street, we're going to be looking at updating our meters on the street. That's not saying we're going to put meters back, that means we're going to look at different technology. They could be smart meters, they could be kiosk systems, or it could be a mobile app that we're going to look at. We're also going to look at LPR technology for parking enforcement vehicles to make that more efficient as we move forward with that technology. And then we also have to roll into the parking lots, the entrance and exits, we want to make sure that it can be both utilized by public and permit holders as we move forward in these parking lots. At this current time, I'm here for any questions you would have.
Thank you, Ryan. Wow, it's almost like it's 2025. It's going to be...
Not quite yet, we're getting there.
It's going to be strange to not drive through a time warp every time you go into one of the parking ramps, so that's great. No, it's very exciting, in all seriousness. We've been talking about this for a long time, you've been working on it even longer, so thank you very much for the update. I appreciate the fact that you're updating us in real time. I think that's actually really helpful for us and for the public, so. Questions, discussion? Ms. Rousell.
Thanks. This all sounds wonderful and very, much more efficient and make parkers happy, and I'm sure everything's going to work great most of the time, but if there were to be a problem, is there like a phone number that someone would call if they were encountering a problem?
Yes. As you're exiting, if there's an issue, right on the exit technology, you click the call button, and it links right to our parking team, as in right to our central office that we utilize during the day. If not, we have on-call staff at night that handle it also. And with that technology, it's live time, we have cameras that can see what's going on on the screens to make sure if it is a valid reason, or if it's someone just trying to get out of parking.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. So, in my research, when I was researching the parking for the Unified Development Code, I did a lot of online looking, different cities, et cetera, and sometimes it looks like that our residents, or their residents of these other cities have an adverse reaction to any parking change and every parking change, and that, you know, it's going to be a challenge to make, because it's going to be a big improvement, expectations are very high, like it just automatically happens. So I know that there'll be a learning curve, and I'm glad you're learning some of the questions that people have, and get ready. So, whether it's LP, you know, the license plate reader, pay stations, coins, or apps, you know, there are people who have issues with them, and I get it, because there are going to be issues with those. So, I have a, you know, there's all these different solutions, and we can do what we can do. So, say when we go to London, we get this Oyster card, and it just goes on every, when I go to the bus, or in the underground, or parking, I just put that up there, and it works, right? So you put money on the card, and then there's this other app that I have that refills automatically, it's connected to my account. So, that, I mean, are there services like that coming, that they see this license plate, they've registered it with it, and there's a refilling amount that just happens, or they've registered it with it, and there's a refilling amount that just happens, or they make happen, or? I know you're doing the best with today's technology, and what about looking forward to tomorrow and anticipating some of this? What do you see coming?
That's a very good question, and the hardest part to answer that is, I need to have the On Street RFP complete first so I can tie this technology together. What we have noticed since I've come to the city is, we have this program over here, and we have this program over here, but none of them talk to each other. So when we put the parking ramp technology, and we made sure it spoke to our internal programs already, that was a requirement of it, and a requirement that's going to go on the RFP as we move forward is that the On Street technology and the LPR system speaks with our current technology so I can bundle it all together, and then from there, we can start creating that. I've had a lot of people ask me, well, this is great, but are we going to have it on an app? And the future state is, that is our goal. Our goal is to have this live technology somewhere so you can either pull up the city website, or a city parking website, and it says right there, the intermodal ramp has X amount of spaces, the Iowa Street has X amount of spaces. That's all doable. This is something we can easily do moving forward. I just need that On Street RFP to be complete first before I start tying the APIs together.
Thank you. And going off of Ms. Rusell's question, I know some people who don't want to go onto the ramp because they don't want to be somehow trapped and then not know what to do, you know? And so is there an escape room or something you can, you know, something that you can do and say, we'll take this care of this later, but I got to get out of here, and I don't know what I'm doing? Or, you know, that's maybe an impossible thing to do, but I just know people who don't want to use the ramp because they don't want to be stuck, and then they look silly when somebody comes over and touches a button, and then it opens up. Anyway, so you mentioned that there will be a phone number to call.
Definitely, yes.
And to say, look at, you know, somebody says, look at, I paid, and all of a sudden it doesn't say, you know, you don't trust me, or, you know, there's these issues that people have, and we want to make it as smooth as possible. Everything I hear coming from you sounds like you're trying to make this as accessible and smooth for all our residents, which is great to hear. And you're hearing all these things and seeing things, I love the things that you're going through, and you're working it out bit by bit, and, you know, trust and verify our residents and get them into the ramps. I just, once we get going and it's smooth, I think it's going to be a great improvement, so thank you.
So that's another good statement, is as people utilize the ramps, and that's why we're updating our signage and updating our colors, we want people to come in the ramps. That is, that's why we built the ramps, we have them for that parking occupancy downtown and throughout the city. But as far as the individuals that are intimidated by the ramps, I'll put it that way, as they pull in these ramps, our previous ramps, we had signs everywhere. Like if you went up to pay, it was push this button and hit that, and here's your credit card, and it was so overwhelming to look at. This new technology, as you go through there, we have the screen, and it tells you exactly what to do. There's only one spot you're looking at. You're not looking at six different signs anymore. It is one screen that says, scan your ticket, insert your credit card, please take your seat, and then out you go. It makes it more universal, and now if somebody's using the intermodal ramp compared to the Iowa Street ramp, it's all the same technology. So if you have friends that use these ramps, they can literally tell you it's the same technology across the board. As far as pushing the help button, our team can see exactly what they're looking at on the screens, and our team can actually go and look and say, oh, this is your license plate, you pulled in at noon today, it's 2:00 today, this is what it's telling you, you need to insert your credit card. We can walk through just like a help desk. So I don't want anybody to be intimidated by the ramps, because everybody's learning how to use these as we move forward. So I would encourage people to go in and try them, and if they have questions, that's what we're here for, to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So one of the ongoing concerns, at least as long as I have been here on city council, is whether or not, does the city quote-unquote "need" another ramp downtown? And so what I think this provides is the data point for the inventory and for the use, which is really, I think, helpful in the strategic planning for what the fill needs would be for the spaces. And this is coming out of COVID as well, so there's still more iterations downtown, if you will, of commercial fill. And again, with the University of Dubuque, a good example there, with more people coming, up to 800 students at the peak of the capabilities of the university. So I just really applaud this, and I really appreciate the fact that not only do you have occupancy data, but you also have revenue data. And at some point, will we have an opportunity to hear what it costs per ramp, or what the costs are for your monthly passes, so we can share that with the community?
That definitely will be explained as we move forward. This isn't the last time you'll see me come do an update.
I understand that.
I'll make sure as we get through it all, because as we wire each ramp, we are making sure that we're not putting a Band-Aid on it, we're actually fixing the technology that we need to fix so that we're not Band-Aiding it every month. I mean, I have a great team, and they can fix a lot of things, but we need to quit fixing, and we need to put it in properly so that the next 10, 15 years, it's operating at its optimal level.
Right, and your guiding light happens to be the technology, so that's another area that I applaud the use of, in the fact that we're getting such sophistication that will evolve over time, and then technology will change on a rapid pace too, so hopefully the data, and hopefully you can accumulate more than just occupancy and revenue, you could do all kinds of space management by car types, and trucks, and different kinds of vehicles. So thank you, and I look forward to the next steps. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Sprank?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. No real questions or anything, just more praise and comments. I like the fact that universal, every ramp will be color-coded, and it is kind of funny that people do get lost in parking ramps, but it does make sense to just have one color for per floor, so that's very nice. And I'm really impressed with, it sounds like it's going to be pretty easy, and I'll have to experiment with it and actually literally come down to the parking ramp and pay for it to try to get out, because anything that makes people's life easier, I'm all for, so I'm looking forward to that. And I would like to definitely echo with Mr. Resnick's idea of an app, or like either a card, or something that can be used in all of, between the streets, and of course the ramps, so that's all.
So I do want to echo on that, if that's okay. You brought up coming down to the ramp. I do encourage people, so we do have a 15-minute grace period, so if you pull into a ramp and you're like, oh darn, I have to go home and get something. If you pulled a ticket, as in you're a public parker, and you need to exit right away, you literally go to the exit lane, scan your ticket, it's free of charge, and you can exit the ramp. So for anybody that is intimidated by the ramps or nervous about using them, go down, pull a ticket, pull right through if you want, and see how easy it is to use.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thanks. Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
I'm interested to know so far what's been the biggest surprise in implementation for where we're at?
That's a very good question.
I mean, I imagine there has been, you know, some things that surprised you in how we implement the system in our ramps.
I think it's all the options it has. So when we looked at different systems, we did it in-depth, and we traveled and looked at the different systems and what were out there. We went to the conferences, but you can only get so much from those conferences, you can only get so much from talking to people. When we turned the system on and we were able to navigate it, all of the different options we have to bring in data, look at occupancy levels, help people out with, okay, this is how many times you use the ramp a month, do you want to be a permit parker, or should you just pay every time you come in? These are things we're able to do. So I think the biggest eye-opening thing is what this system can do for us, and that's why we're very excited about the On Street, because that RFP, we've been upgrading as we've been going through this new technology we're putting into the ramps. I'm going to have a two-part questionnaire, is the people have been amazing to work with. I didn't know how much pushback we'd get when we were getting new proxy cards, because everyone had to get a new card, everyone, if they wanted to put a license plate on file, and everyone was overwhelmingly helpful. They came down, here's my current credentials, here's my license plates. I think maybe out of the two ramps, we had two people that said, oh, I don't know if I want to use that technology. Then we walked through it, and it was fluent, and away we went. So I was very impressed with how well people took in the new information and were excited to go forward. And we've been on some phone calls with different businesses downtown where they were giving us feedback on, hey, so-and-so used the ramps, and they couldn't believe how fast it was. And so-and-so used the ramp, and the first time, they were kind of confused why the arm was going up, and they weren't even at the exit lane, then they figured out their license plate was on file. So it's not entertaining, it's a new process that they're learning, but I'm amazed with how fast people are picking it up.
Great. Next question. As we look back at trying as a council, I think we are engaged in trying to preserve what we have and making sure that maintenance is part of that preservation. When we put layers of paint on, I want to make sure they continue to look fresh. When we do these signs, I want to make sure that we continue to recheck them and make sure they're not damaged. So I just want to know, moving forward, is there a specific maintenance monitoring that you and your staff are going to do to keep it looking the way it's going to look right now?
Very good question. The nice part as we move to the new technology is it's going to free up labor and time from what we're doing with fixing our old technology. So we have over 2,000, we're right at 2,000 meters throughout the city, and every day we're going out and fixing meters, because they are older, they do need an update, they need new batteries, they need a lot of TLC, we'll put it that way. We're going to have a lot of time free up from that, and the city manager already knows that I'm not scared to say, hey, we need to update this, this is how much money we need to update it. And if there's funds available, the city manager's been great at working with me on it, but if there's not, we figure out a different plan to make sure that it still looks clean and neat as we move forward.
I just want to make sure as we look at where we've been and where we're going, I'm very excited about it, so I don't mean to put like a shower, you know, cloud over the parade here. But I just know these kind of things can take on a lot of wear and tear, so I just am very concerned about making sure we keep that in mind moving forward. The other thing is just input from community and businesses and the consultants we hired. I know that we've been very engaged. Can you share with me, I guess I have never asked this before during your presentations, has the Transit Advisory Board been part of the conversations that you've had on this?
Yes, we involve the Transit Advisory Board. This is not something they, this is not something they get to oversee and have vast input on, but they are updated on it, and we do have some pretty in-depth discussion on the parking world. So they know the process we're going through as we have our Transit Advisory Board meetings, and I do listen to their input on it. As far as how much governance they have, they really don't have a lot on the parking world, but we have taken a lot of their advice as far as the On Street as we're moving forward with that.
And I guess I would really like their input moving forward as we look at our On Street options. It sounds like this is being executed really well, but I think when it comes to user-friendly, the more people we have engaged, and those are people that obviously have an aptitude to help you and help us with the process, and so I hope that they'll be engaged as much as possible.
I would definitely do that.
I would like to point out, it's the Transit Advisory Board, so it's an administrative function that we combine the transit and parking into one department. It's not a commission. So the commission that you created and appointed is the Transit Advisory Board, not the Parking Advisory Board.
No, I understand. Yeah, yeah. But they still are the group of people that would be giving this input, correct?
No, no, they're not.
So they have input due to FDA regulations on the transit side, but I include them in the parking world because our division works with it, just so they have a knowledge on what we're doing, and we do take their input on it, but as far as them giving governance over it, they're strictly on the transit side.
But are giving input?
Say that again?
But are asked about...
So what he says is he does have conversations with them because he does meet with them about transit issues, and when he does, he mentions parking issues.
Okay.
But they have no role in parking under the ordinance or in function. That doesn't mean he doesn't talk to them, but they are not the Parking Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you.
So let me get some clarity on that. So this is, are they federally, is there, do we have federal regulations that say we have to have a Transit Advisory Board?
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit more? I think that would help in this discussion.
So the FDA does require us to have a Transit Advisory Board, and we meet X amount of times a year, I believe it's four, to discuss our transit and any changes or public input on that, to make sure we're overseeing that properly. And as we have those meetings, I usually shave off five to 10 minutes to talk about our parking and the changes we're doing with that, because that will have an impact on our transit and how people are using ramps, and how many bus stops we need in certain areas. So this does affect that, especially when we start talking On Street, which we've brought up to our advisory board. And again, we do have in-depth conversations over it, because as we talk On Street, our buses use the curbs a lot to pick up and drop off passengers, so we do engage them, but as far as governance, they just monitor the transit side.
So from a governance standpoint, we have to have a Transit Advisory Board, and it has to be focused on the transit part of our department. The fact that we have a transportation department that has parking and transit together is, as you said, Mike, an administrative function, so they aren't necessarily, we don't necessarily have a group of, we don't have a citizen-led commission that focuses on parking specifically.
That's correct.
Is that like an easier way to say that?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. I think that's hopefully helpful in this conversation, at least a little bit, to understand that there's a federally required reason to have a Transit Advisory Board in that.
But Ryan has, does have a robust interaction with the users of our parking system, especially the major users like the downtown businesses, so you meet with them routinely.
Correct. We have monthly meetings with certain business groups downtown, we interact with businesses throughout the downtown, so we do receive a lot of input, and I will let you know, in the parking world, people are not scared to pick up the phone and call us with an issue, and we're always available for that. That way we can talk through what the issue is, and if it's something we need to correct, or if it's an ordinance we need to look at, but the general public is not scared to call us about parking issues.
Gotcha. Okay. Did you have any more on this matter? No? Anyone else? All right. Well, I think all the great questions have been asked here, so I don't need to ask anymore, but the one thing I will say is, you know, the most thing that I, I appreciate two main things of what you're saying here. First, that you're going to keep coming to us like this with this type of information, I think that is extremely helpful, because as you just stated, this is a major issue for people who live and drive and travel through a city. And to be able to use the technology that is there, it can be anxiety-producing when it changes, and I really appreciate that you're not changing it all at the same time. I think that is exactly the right call for our community, and it sounds like people appreciate that too, so I think that's great. Looking forward to hearing more, and looking forward to moving on to the next steps, so thanks a lot for being here, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay. Well, the motion here was to receive and file, and have that presentation and discussion. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rusell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is Dubuque County Historical Society Letter of Authorization to Iowa Economic Development and Finance Authority's Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank.
My motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second. Motion by Sprank, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. Interim Parks and Recreation Director Steve Faisal is recommending city council approval of the attached letter of authorization in support of the Dubuque County Historical Society's application to the Iowa Economic Development and Finance Authority's State Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program. The city is the owner of the Ham House and its buildings and grounds, which are leased to Dubuque County Historical Society. Their current lease has a term that commenced on June 1, 2006, and runs until May 31, 2031. The lease outlines the Dubuque County Historical Society will maintain the interior with the city maintaining the exterior of the Ham House. The relationship has been beneficial to both parties. Dubuque County Historical Society specializes in historic structures and the interpretation of those assets. The Mathias Ham House, a National Register of Historic Places property, is designated as a city landmark site. Dubuque County Historical Society and the city have a long history of collaboration, stewarding the historic architecture as well the historic site, recognizing the power of working partnerships and the fundamental significance of the Ham House and its site structures as representative of our cultural heritage. The city's Historic Preservation Commission has the responsibility to promote the protection, enhancement, and perpetuation of such landmarks through outreach, education, and design review. The interior restoration and preservation has been guided by the Mathias Ham House[1742.41] enhancement, and perpetuation of such landmarks through outreach, education, and design review. The interior restoration and preservation has been guided by the Mathias Ham House Historic Structures Report that will ensure the house's preservation for years to come. Heritage Works is assisting Dubuque County Historical Society in preparing the Iowa Economic Development and Finance Authority's State Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program application and needs the city's authorization as owner of the facility. There is no budgetary impact to the city in this action. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. So the ham house has been closed for the season for a while and there's a lot of work going on. I was hoping that Mr. Faisal, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, could come up and give our residents an update on what's going on at the ham house.
Absolutely.
Steve Faisal, interim Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, we've been working very closely with the Dubuque County Historical Society for improvements to the ham house. They've been doing a lot of work interior and exterior. A lot of the foundation work has been repaired. They are actually doing a lot of window repair, exterior painting to all the exterior wooden structures. The roof was replaced a couple of years back. So they're focusing on the decorative facias and soffits that are around the house, fixing the wood that needs to be repaired. Inside, it's my understanding, I haven't been in there in a month or so, but they are re, actually making new cove molding or, you know, molding around the ceilings. They're actually reconstructing that back to the original like it used to be. So there's a lot of work going on inside and that's the reason why it has been closed all summer, because a lot of the work is also happening inside. So I'm excited to see it here in a couple of weeks when we have another meeting with them to see where they're actually at. But they've invested, along with cities matching some of their, their grant funds, they invested a huge amount of funds into this project and it's super exciting. I think it's going to be a really great improvement to see it when it's all complete.
So are costs being split as in Mr. Van Milligan's memo between the outside and the inside?
Yes, so there's, there's some different grant agreements in place. I'm not the subject matter on this. But we have been, as part of a Jeffries grant that the ham house received, there's a city match to that. So we have been budgeting capital improvement money that's been approved by council to help offset some of those costs. For example, one of the capital projects that we budgeted for was the replacement of the roof. That was $145,000 towards a grant match and the roof was replaced two, two years ago. So we are assisting with some funding.
Every year the ham house does a great job preparing for Christmas and the decorations. Are they going to be closed this year for Christmas and when are, when are they going to be actually open? What's the plan?
Good question. I, I don't know that information off the top of my head. I can certainly get it for you. I, I haven't talked to the Historical Society group recently. I'm not sure they're planning on being open this year at all, but I can definitely ask.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or discussion? Not seeing any here. Steve, thank you very much. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is Letters of Support for an Iowa Redevelopment Tax Credit Application for Downtown Redevelopment Projects on a grayfield site.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second. Good work for Rousell, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approve the submission of letters of support to accompany an Iowa redevelopment tax credit application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority, being submitted for redevelopment of three downtown properties in Dubuque. Developers in Iowa can receive tax credits for redeveloping properties known as brownfield and grayfield sites. Additional tax credits are available for projects that meet or exceed sustainable design standards as defined by state law. This tax credit program is offered as a way to promote the economic health of communities by reducing environmental potential hazards, cleaning up ISOs, creating new jobs, and boosting tax revenue. A grayfield site is an abandoned public building or industrial commercial property that meets certain requirements and then is eligible for tax credits of up to 12% of qualifying cost of a grayfield project and 15% of the project meets green building requirements. The program is capped at $15 million per fiscal year with a maximum award of $1.5 million per project. Applications for this program are accepted by the state of Iowa on an annual basis due by September 1st. The following projects have requested a letter of support from the city to accompany their application. This letter confirms the city's recognition that the property meets the state's definition of a grayfield site and that its redevelopment benefits the community. First is Fifth and Main Street. This property has served as a surface parking lot for decades. The city of Dubuque and Grown and Development entered into a development agreement on March 17th, 2025, for the creation of 8,000 square feet of first-floor commercial space and at least 80 rental residential units at an investment of approximately $24 million on this site. Property is located immediately west of the future John and Alice Butler School of Osteopathic Medicine, being developed by the University of Dubuque. Number two, 801 Jackson Street. After closing its millworking operations decades ago, this property evolved into a hodgepodge of storage, bakery, and office space that mostly sits abandoned. The city of Dubuque and Farley &amp; Letcher LLC entered into a development agreement on September 5th, 2023, for the creation of 126 rental residential units at an investment of approximately $25 million on this site. And then number three, and the last one is 1236 to 1248 Iowa Street. The Iowa Street Loss Project proposed to create 13 apartments in the mixed-use building immediately adjacent to City Hall. The developer also intends to restore the commercial storefronts and exterior of the building. Economic development staff have been in conversation with the developer for several months to discuss the plans for this building and believe it will be eligible for several of our rehabilitation grant programs. The developer intends to invest approximately $2.5 million in the project. These projects align with the city's strategic goals of enhancing our urban core, expanding workforce housing, promoting walkable neighborhoods, and supporting local business growth. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. It's, I guess what I'm getting, I was just re, running the numbers quick. We're looking at almost 200 apartments at over 50-some million dollars of investment. And that's amazing when we talk about things that we're trying to do in our community. And folks wonder what we do on council. And so I like to sometimes remind folks that, well, we're just about to potentially probably approve this. And now we're going to have in the next coming, probably two to three upcoming years, that many more places for people to live at, at over $50 million in investment. So it's something to think about just for, just for a second. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Sprank. Any others? That's enough of a mic drop moment there, I guess. We can just move on from that. Thank you, Mr. Sprank. All right. Yeah, I'll just echo the, the thanks for, you know, all the work that is being done and, and obviously these are great projects. Just add them to the list of all the great projects that we're seeing, but these are some more. So looking forward to being able to approve this. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is Fly DBQ Rewards and Incentives.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file.
Second. Motion by Farber, second by Jones. Mike, I'll come to you if you have anything you'd like to add to this.
Actually, you'd be probably a better spokesperson about this than I would be, but this is just the brochure related to the incentives approved by Dubuque Initiatives, where they're offering a $100 rebate per ticket booked on Denver Airlines out of Dubuque. The booking just needs to happen before the end of the, this month. The flight doesn't need to happen by the end of this month, but they need to buy their ticket by the end of this month.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. You know, I guess the, the main thing that I'll say is that, you know, this, this council made, has made air service and in particularly commercial air service, both the retention and attraction of new air service, a, one of our, our high and top priorities for the last couple of years. And, you know, what, what I think this really shows is that it's, it's not just the city council that's doing this and making this effort. This is, I mean, the full community is behind this effort. And when I say full community, I mean, we've got Dubuque Initiatives here, we've got Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, there's a whole list of other organizations that are represented on the DBQ Airboard. There's a lot of work being done to try and do everything we can to make this, this service as, as a successful and as viable as possible. I will reiterate, it's extremely difficult work. It's an extremely difficult environment that we are dealing with when it comes to air service in general. And having one flight a day to be able to, to get somewhere even though that gets us where we need to go is, is a really, it's really hard and it takes some time. But we are incrementally, I mean incrementally, making the, the increases that we need to see. This is definitely helping. So I, I sincerely want to just say thank you to Dubuque Initiatives in particular for stepping up with the rebate program. I also want to say thank you to Denver Air Connection. I mean, it's very clear when you look at this incentive, this incentive sheet here that we have a company that we're working with, an air carrier that, that is doing what they can to try and help us make this successful. And they have said so over and over again. They want Dubuque to be successful. So I very much appreciate this and just encourage everybody to, to reach out and use this rebate program. It's for anybody. So anybody who wants to use it. I, I really hope that people are doing so because it's a, it really is a great service, especially now that we get to leave in the morning, come back in the evening. It's really a great service. And it doesn't get any better than flying out of Dubuque Airport. You want to go through TSA in less than five minutes? Fly Dubuque. It's just, it's fantastic and the service is incredible. As, you know, Rick Dickinson actually pointed this out in a meeting the other day, and I, I've experienced this myself, in fact, because I was a little late one day. And the, the air, the airport staff will actually call you from the Dubuque Airport if you are running a little bit late and they want to make sure that you're, you know, on your way to get on the flight. So they've caught a few people whose alarm didn't work quite right and they were able to get them on that flight. And that's, that's the kind of service that we're talking about at the Dubuque Airport. You know, it's not guaranteed to happen every single time that way, but it's, it's some pretty good service. So very, very glad that everybody is pulling out all the stops that we can to make this happen. Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Mayor, I was talking to a citizen of Dubuque who recently retired and their retirement dream was to fly to Seattle and drive down, get a rental car, drive down Highway One along California and, and just enjoy the, enjoy the journey. And he told me that he had all these plans for looking at these other airports. And he said, well, let's just check Dubuque because of course we'd like to go out to Dubuque. And he was shocked that it was the least expensive option by several hundred dollars to, to get to Seattle. And again, it, we talk about convenience and we talk about many things and how important it is to our community. But I'd be, you know, citizens should check that, check that option out, not just for the convenience and the time-saving, but, you know, in many instances, it's actually costs less money by several hundred dollars. And so they are, they are thrilled and they're going to definitely go through this and, and have some more money in their pocket when they're done. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. All right. Well, this is available for everyone to see and hopefully many, many more will use it. So glad this is on the agenda tonight. Motion here is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Wins International Economic Development Council Gold Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file.
Second. Motion by Rousell, second by Resnick. Mike?
Thank you. The Greater Dubuque Development Corporation receives 2025 Excellence in Economic Development Gold Award from the International Economic Development Council. The International Economic Development Council's annual excellence awards honors the economic development organizations, government entities, initiatives, and programs that demonstrate consistent exemplary performance in the profession. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation received the 2025 Excellence in Economic Development Gold Award from the International Economic Development Council. The award was bestowed for the organization's work in the innovative economic development category that impacted communities of 25,000 to 200,000 residents. Greater Dubuque Development will be acknowledged and honored at the Iowa Econ, I'm sorry, at the International Economic Development Council's 2025 Annual Conference in Detroit, September 14th to 17th, 2025. The Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is leading the field of excellence in economic development with its Dubuque Broadband Acceleration Initiative program and project. This award shines a spotlight on the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation's commitment to its community and showcases the significant impact of economic development, said Nathan Oly, the IEDC president and CEO. The IEDC is honored to present this award to the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation to celebrate both their leadership and innovation in the field. Each year, IEDC honors economic development organizations, government entities, initiatives, and programs that consistently demonstrate excellence in the field. The honorees lead transformational projects that revitalize communities and advance the practice of economic development. And this is a statement by Rick Dickinson, the president and CEO of Greater Dubuque Development. Greater Dubuque Development is honored to receive this recognition and accept this award on behalf of all of the partners whose leadership and collaboration made the Dubuque Broadband Acceleration Initiative possible. By working alongside the city of Dubuque, Iman Communications, and other key stakeholders, we have demonstrated how public-private partnerships can deliver innovative infrastructure solutions that strengthen our economy and improve our quality of life. This initiative reflects our steadfast commitment to ensuring that you can be great here.
Thank you, Mike. Well, Rick, Jason, team, congratulations on this. I mean, it really is, you know, I hope people can, can really recognize just how much we're kicking butt in this town in the things that we're doing with things like what GDTC has done here with the broadband initiative. It is not a simple thing to make sure that you have fiber to the home for almost every single home and business in an entire city of 60,000 people. That is not an easy thing to do at all. And the fact that you are recognized internationally for this speaks volumes to the work that is getting done here. And we just keep on doing it. And I want to thank Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. You know, I know that there's a very large board that's a part of all of that too. I'm honored to be able to sit on that with several members of the, the council here as long as the, the city manager, as well as the city manager. So congratulations on some great work done. I'll give you a round of applause. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Resnick?
If this weren't such a formal occasion, I would, I would say speech, speech. But I actually would like it if, if you would allow perhaps Mr. Dickinson or Jason that you mentioned to come up and, and, and just give us a, just give the residents a little bit of talking about what just happened and let them speak about this great award. I think they deserve a few minutes.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. I've never known Rick Dickinson to not want to, you know, provide a few other words just to, to let us know what happened. But in all seriousness, Rick, we'd love to hear from you on this.
First of all, I was remiss when I spoke to you earlier. My name is Rick Dickinson. I reside at 205 Hill Street in Dubuque and it's my pleasure to serve as the president and CEO of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. Perhaps the greatest explanation about how cool this award is, is you may remember last year, we received recognition, the award, same award from the International Economic Development Council for the tremendous growth and success in creating expanded, affordable, available childcare in our community. So it's not just one recognition for our community and our team, it's two in a row. We were fortunate to land Imon Communications, which hadn't thought of doing service in Dubuque six years ago, and now are responsible for nearly universal broadband service in our community. This is a phenomenal achievement that is, uh, needs to be attributed to our business community, our citizens, certainly our mayor and council, Dave Lyons from our office, and these providers that really have understood and have delivered service to a great community because we help and work with each other.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Welcome College Students Video.
Mayor? Mr. Jones?
Would we receive, file, and view the video?
Second.
Yeah, motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Felicia, I think we're coming to you for a little presentation on this as well, right?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council. Felicia Carner, multimedia specialist with the City of Dubuque. I am grateful to help introduce a video that was created in collaboration between the city, Mayor Kavanaugh, and the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. This message reflects a warm welcome from our community to those who have chosen Dubuque as the place to continue their education. While short, this video was a true lift from our media services and communications team. Projects like this take coordination and planning, and it wouldn't have been possible without our crew, the mayor, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and the support from the local organizations and businesses seen throughout this video, including B1 Yoga, the Tri-State Mountain Bike Riders, Travel Dubuque, and many others. It's a true welcome from our community. Together, we tried to showcase the life in Dubuque, which, for the record, is impossible to do in a minute and a half. Our community has so much to offer, far more than what we could show here. This video is part of a larger effort led by the court and coordinated by Greater Dubuque Development, and will be delivered to every Dubuque college student. For some, it may be their first introduction to Dubuque, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to help shape that first impression. Thank you to the mayor and to Greater Dubuque Development for their continued efforts and commitment and to attract and retain young professionals to our community. We're proud to have been part of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Um, Rick, did you have some things you wanted to talk about, too, or do you want to watch the video and?
We're going to do the video first.
And then you'll come up. Okay, all right. So Eric, you can roll the video, please. Or is it Felicia? It's Felicia.
What's up? Mayor Brad Kavanaugh here, dropping by with a quick welcome. By now, you're all moved in. The first day nerves are settling, and you've closely read each of your class syllabi, right? Well, we'll keep that between you and your professors. What I'd like to share with you is a message about the place you'll call home for the next several months, or longer, hopefully much, much longer, maybe forever, just an idea. Anywho, we want you to consider all of Dubuque, your campus away from campus. From the Mississippi River to the bluffs and rolling hills, to all the plinking pickleball courts and adventurous trails, to the bustling farmers' markets and local shops, Dubuque is yours to explore. As the mayor, I might be a little biased when I say Dubuque is the best small, big city you can be in. Big enough to have opportunities to work, live, and play, small enough to be a part of something, feel connected, and make a difference. Regardless of the path you venture on or the school colors you sport, we want you to see you in DBQ. So explore, get involved, make your mark, and continue through the year with the confidence of knowing that you have an entire community cheering you on. Best of luck and enjoy all that the year brings. Oh, and pro tip, consider actually reading your entire syllabus. Sometimes there's extra credit hidden between the lines.
Most, uh, most communities give their right arm to have a mayor who's just as cool as they are competent. And I think we're very fortunate. Thank you, Mayor, for your taking the time to, to do this. And I'd like to, in conjunction with this video, talk to you about what our community is doing, uh, this community of colleges. We have a great community college in northeast Iowa, Northeast Iowa Community College. But in Dubuque, we are a community of colleges, and I wanted to visit with you just a bit about that. Higher education is a tremendous treasure here. It separates us from the pack, and I wanted to talk to you about what this community is doing to welcome students. Uh, first of all, before the video, a letter from the mayor to the households of every freshman and transferred student to the City of Dubuque, to one of our institutions of higher learning. That number is 1,400 letters sent out by our mayor was delivered. It's very unique for a community, and I think it really is talking to those students when they step foot in our community for the first time, instead of waiting until they walk off the dais at graduation. The key is to reach them early and often, and to share our community with them. Next, the city proclamation, which was back in July, you know, when institutions of higher learning in our community invited the freshmen to come to town. Uh, we were there recognizing them and all the institutions of higher learning in a, uh, in a, uh, presentation at a council meeting in July. Uh, the welcoming message during, uh, college visit week was that message. The video from the mayor will be going out to 4,291 separate emails to every student attending higher education in the Dubuque market. And again, thank you, Mayor, for that. Annual publication of skills gap analysis is done every year by Greater Dubuque Development Corporation in collaboration with Northeast Iowa Community College. This creates information about what curriculum needs to be developed to meet the needs of employers, and we share that information with the institutions of higher learning to provide that curriculum if it's applicable to their vision. Provide support and service as resource for career service staff for all the institutions of higher learning, not just in the Dubuque market, but for a 200-mile radius. Serve on committee of community foundation of Greater Dubuque's International Student Retention Outreach and Welcome Event. Nick Hockenberry from our office serves on that committee. You Can Be Great Here Community of College Events Series. Uh, a lot of folks may not realize this, but we have events throughout the year to try to get kids, students off of campus, meet each other, connect to our community. Those programs include, uh, a night at Fighting Saints hockey game, um, the, uh, so, uh, the Island Social at the Q Casino, the arc, the new arcade, and, and free pizza for the kids. Uh, a number of different events and two career fairs. We've had, uh, over 773 students attend these events in the last year. The Talent Dubuque All Intern Engagement Summer Program. We reach out to the interns. There were 180 interns in Dubuque, working at Dubuque employ, 34 different Dubuque employers this year. And we have programs throughout the summer to, to, again, try to get them to meet other interns, understand what's available in our community, so that we, we can have them consider an opportunity in Dubuque upon graduation. Hello, Dubuque. This is something brand new. If you look at the lower right-hand corner of the, uh, the screen, we are reaching out to institutions of higher learning, to the Regents Institutions, and introducing Dubuque to them. So on September 18th, we'll be having an event at the University of Northern Iowa. They will be our first. Uh, it's the same day as the job fair, so a number of employers from Dubuque will be there for that job fair. But from 3:30 to 7:00, we're inviting the students that you and I to come to our event. Uh, there'll be a chance to win a mountain bike, a kayak, a fun-filled weekend in Dubuque. They'll meet employers, they'll meet each other, we'll have, we'll have a panel, we'll have an artist doing renderings of Dubuque landmarks there, and inviting the, the students to help paint in Between the Lines. It's an attempt to show that this community is someplace where they should consider a career path. Hello, Dubuque is the first of what we hope will be a series of events at every Regent's Institution, University of Northern Iowa, Iowa State, and the University of Iowa. And of course, access to Dubuquejobs.com is a job board that we introduce to, to college students at each of these events, so they're aware that these things are going on in our community. So I want to thank the city for all your collaboration in this. Uh, you've driven this initiative to recognize that we are a community of colleges. You've directed us to provide programming, to try to make that happen and bring it home. We've collaborated with a number of partners to make it real. I think it's fair to say this community is doing more to retain the college students in our market than it has ever done in its 100-year history of having higher education in our market, and it couldn't come at a better time. I would like to mention, as a point of personal privilege, a couple of things that we touched on earlier. Uh, on air service, the Dubuque area can never reach its full potential if it does not have commercial air service. And there's just been a tidal wave of, of, uh, challenges brought to this task, but we've overcome each and every one of them so far. It is a long trek. I commend the mayor and the Fly Dubuque group for what you've done. On the rebate, rebate program, first two weeks of operation, we've sent out 93 $100 vouchers for people flying to Dubuque. We'll work together to try to make this happen. And in regard to smart parking, uh, the question was asked of Ryan, did you have any surprise in the implementation of this, implementation of it? And I think he was less than frank when he shared his answer with you. The answer was yes, we had a surprise. Rick Dickinson was able to use the technology. It is cool. Not only is it foolproof, it is Rick-proof. And wait until you use it. It's part of the intermodal facility, and I commend the city for updating the parking technology. Parking is also a critical component for residential development and commercial development downtown. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thanks for all that, Rick. You know, I, um, remember, you know, as a professor at Loris, uh, one of the local colleges here, I remember the feeling at times of, um, recognizing that we had all these schools and all the colleges and what that meant, and what an incredible asset that was. I mean, we have, not only do we have all these students, we have incredibly intelligent people teaching these students all throughout this town. And to have that there and not utilize that connection more and not be able to reach out more to college students, um, it did seem like we were missing something there. But the, the really important thing is, as a community, and you, as Greater Dubuque Development, recognized that and started to do that, reach out much, much more. I think every single year, we've gotten more and more traction on being able to connect with the students who come and call this city home for the year that they're here, and the four years, and maybe a little beyond that they're here. And it, I think that that is, um, and, and I hear students more and more talking about the fact that they feel more connected to Dubuque. They see more of Dubuque. The colleges are getting students out there more, they're getting to your events. Um, we see them all, the first two weeks that they're here at the farmer's market, they pretty much just take over the farmer's market in their various different colored shirts for different, uh, schools, and it's wonderful to have them. I mean, it really is. So thank you for all the efforts and the energy that you're putting toward this. Um, Felicia, thank you for your energy and, and effort that you put towards making a video like that. You are correct, it's very difficult in a minute and a half to smash all that in there, but why did you do it? You really, you made it happen. You got every single school in there doing a lot of fun things, so thank you, as always, for the great work that you do and the, and the team with the communications department. Any others before we close out? All right. Well, Rick, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. All right. Motion here was to receive and file and watch the presentation and video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
All right. Kids are off to school. Summer's still here, don't let anybody tell you different, but things are a little busier. So what we got? Mr. Sprank?
Just filling in my constituents, um, I attended the DRA meeting, and then, of course, the DRA had their grant reception, where Mr. Dickinson gave a very wonderful speech, uh, showing the correlation of the grapes of Arath and all the great things that have been happening in Dubuque. And then prior to tonight's meeting, um, I almost got here a little late, the Point Neighborhood Association had their annual kind of welcoming event to the neighbors, and there's about 20 or 30 neighbors there. And then, as always, people are always saying, there's nothing to do in town. Um, the dragon boat races are all this weekend at Schmidt, down on Schmidt Island. So if you want to go see some folks doing crazy rowing, go down there. And then, as part of my mayor pro tem duties, I'll be reading the proclamation at the Nathaniel Morgan Memorial. Otherwise, that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Farber?
Yes. So this weekend, I spent Saturday with 20,000 of my newest best friends, uh, at the Field of Dreams. So if you build it, if you host a, an event of a concert that starts at 2:00 and ends at 11:00, uh, they will come, and they did. And I just, it was so wonderful to see this, um, group of, uh, passionate, um, country music, um, fans in Dubuque from many states and many countries. It was just really an amazing event. Everybody played well. Um, the traffic was so mastered, uh, by the Field of Dreams team, so kudos, uh, to all the management. And Mike, as you know, the, the ghost players were there, uh, sharing and talking to all the, um, people that were playing catch on the field, and Dwyer Brown was there as well, who played the father of, um, Kevin Costner in the movie, so he shared some, some photos with some of the folks there as well. So just a great, um, unique opportunity for Dubuque to hopefully, um, show that we can be an entertainment destination as well. So just wanted to share that. And the weather was perfect.
Yeah. Incredible. That's great. Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. Well, Dubuque Main Street's been very busy. I worked on the executive committee, the board committee, and also working on their State of Maine Awards Committee. So put on your calendar Thursday, October 23rd, for the annual State of Maine Awards. I also attended the HACAP Board Meeting, and Dubuque Trees Forever has been working with lots of volunteers at our neighborhood orchard in the past couple of weeks, including a team from the FXI Company. And it's just great to see companies that allow their employees time off work to give back to their community. I volunteered at the farmer's market token booth again, and yep, I saw lots of college students there from across the country. And I was excited to participate in the Labor Day Parade to honor our working men and women. So it was a, um, exciting event.
Great, thanks, Ms. Russell.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, a little, little going on. Left here a couple of weeks ago and, and just kept coming back. Tuesday, the 29th, we had a Travel Dubuque meeting, a lot going on there. I'm glad that, uh, the McGraw-Conster is over with, because I think Keith's, uh, heart rate will come back down to normal now. Um, the, the panic was that, uh, our best place to park cars at the Field of Dreams, that doesn't, uh, really gets slippery and messy when it, when it rains, is where the concert was being held. So it was all second best and third best, and rain would have been a, a game changer. Thank goodness it didn't rain. Um, 21st, Thursday, I went down to the Buzz Street Neighborhood Association. They've kind of got it going on for relatively new association. They're planning their, their Christmas things and, and, uh, just a, a ton of stuff going on. It was, uh, it was a nice one to be at. Saturday, the 23rd, I went to a book signing I talked about last meeting with Bob Hurley, retired Iowa State trooper. Um, he's a very interesting guy, a lot of good stories, bought his book, wrote his book, um, recommend his book. Tuesday, the 26th, was our DRA Board Meeting. Um, also, the 26th, David and, and Laura and I sat down with a Dubuqueer, Chrissy Hoag-Bardels, who's, uh, involved with an entertainment company called Torfoot, and they do films, big deal films, like 16 million dollar budget, budget films. She's trying to find ways to do that in Dubuque and do more of it here. And I think we'll hear more from her and from that company in the, in the near future. She's just looking for a couple of brains to pick on partnerships that she could go after, and, and I invited a couple of my artist colleagues from the council to sit down with her. We had a real good conversation. So had a ribbon cutting on the 26th also for the Good Life Veterinary Clinic, learned why you neuter your dog. Um, I'll tell you about that later. 27th, we had Solid Waste Agency Board Meeting. Things are going well there. We've, we've got, uh, grading and paving and things happening out at the CCC. Um, that evening, we're all together again for the Unified Development Code Work Session. I'm real happy with the direction that's going. 28th was the DRA's grant reception. Friday, we had our ribbon cutting at McDonald's Supply. It's a 150-year-old company in Dubuque, and I did question why we're now just, just now getting around to the ribbon cutting. But, uh, the reason for that is they just completely renovated the showroom out there. It's fabulous. And people don't realize how much that, that, uh, supply company has to do with living in your homes every day. The plumber that built your house probably bought his stuff there. Um, and, you know, you can walk in there and shop and see what, see what you like and tell your plumber about it and go get it. Went to an open house, uh, on East Fourth Street at Elevated Images, and their new space. And it's, it's kind of a neat little space. And we went next, up the street a couple of doors to see if we could have a problem with the neighbors, but they weren't open at the Kavanaugh shop. And of course, I was with a whole bunch of you Monday for the Labor Day Parade. We came back tonight.
Well, thanks, Mr. Jones. All right. Mr. Resnick?
Very quickly, I, uh, visited with a family from Texas who came up to Dubuque, uh, for a family wedding, the father of the bride. We have a nice, long conversation. Uh, I supplied, you know, we supplied some music that night, but they, I want to talk about our community partners a little bit, and he thought Dubuque was a beautiful place. our community partners a little bit, and he thought Dubuque was a beautiful place. He'd never been here, hardly ever heard of Dubuque either, so he was really surprised at what a magnificent city we have. He was particularly impressed by the site of the wedding, which is St. Raphael's Cathedral, who has been had a recent renovation, so it's beautiful, and the Hotel Julian, their facility and staff were top-notch that night, and he was just very impressed with our community. So and it's, so there are many things that reflect on us and, you know, so many partners to make this a beautiful place to live, and so I just wanted to give a shout out to St. Raphael's Cathedral and the Hotel Julian. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Resnick. Ms. Wethel.
I also was fortunate enough to hang out with about 20,000 people. It was fantastic, and I I have to tell you, I was nervous about just the logistics of how a very tight-knit group of people in our community have worked so hard to pull this off. You guys, I just, I was blown away. I was so proud. I was so excited to be there and had my kids there, they had the time of their life, it was so much fun, and the advisement of just be patient, be kind, I just saw that on display in really unique, beautiful ways. So kudos to everybody who was involved. While I was there, I spoke with someone who had not been in Dubuque for some time, and they actually have a background in economic development in a large area in Iowa, and they said, man, Dubuque has it going on, and really just complimented on the growth that Dubuque has seen, and specifically when it comes to tourism and really showing our beautiful river and downtown in historic buildings. Also attended the Labor Day Parade, the DRA Grant Awards Ceremony. I had my Dubuque Early Childhood Board Meeting as well, meeting with a great group of concerned organizations about the wellness of children going back to school, providing vaccines and making them accessible to families. Kudos to them and to our VNA. I stopped at Dubuque Rescue Mission the other day, and the Mercy One Mobile Medical Unit was there, and they were simply checking blood pressures, checking in on people about medications. Oftentimes, Crescent will come and kind of co-work with them to make sure people can get set up with appointments and needs that they have, and they're on a first-name basis with these folks. They're there all the time, and just getting to kind of hang out with them for a while and learn about what they do, there's so many unsung heroes and organizations and people who care so much, who give so much. So kudos to them and and all their work. Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys are great, seriously. You're just such great people to work with. I mean, like, I sit here and listen to these reports, and I just, I'm amazed by the dedication that each one of you has to this community, and I appreciate it so much. So thank you for all the service and all the things you do. Aside from going to the Field of Dreams, I did most of those things that you were talking about, so I've seen you at a lot of different things. I have nothing further to report. We have a closed session, so I'll take a motion. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jones.
I move the city council going to closed session in accordance to Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and potential sale or purchase of real estate.
Second. Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney of the city council we'll consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Karen Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.